We'll call tonight's meeting to order. A roll call, please, Lisa.
Mrs. Blitha?
Here.
Ms. Burnett?
Here.
Ms. Lynch, here. Mr. Merritt?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Prather?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Schreick?
Here.
Stand through the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make note of executive session, January 21st, 2020, for student discipline and potential litigation. And then at this time, are there any public comments regarding tonight's agenda? Then we'll move on to a presentation to the making a donation to the caring closet by the Meadville Area Senior High School class of 1964. And I do believe Pat Conchi is speaking for the group.
I'm Pat Conchi, and I'm from the Meadville Area Senior High School class of 1964. In 2014, we had our 45th class reunion, and at that time, one of our classmates, Ruth, she started out being Widman, then Mutzos, then Shrek, suggested that we make a donation to the caring closet at the high school. And we took up a donation that year, and we decided this year, we've lost Ruth since then. And our class decided this year that, in memory of Ruth, we would continue that. So we took up another donation at our 50th high school reunion this August, and we collected $2,325, which we would like to donate to the caring closet.
Thank you.
I am deeply moved by the donation. It's my honor to accept it. I did not know Ruth as well as I hoped, but over the years, she would come to me every once in a while and say, "Is there anything you need? What can I do for you?" And that's kind of unique. In case none of you don't know what we do at Meadville High School and Meadville Middle School, the caring closet has three components to it. We give free shoes, boots, coats, and clothing to anyone in need, and that happens regularly throughout the day, throughout the weeks. And we, it's an expensive venture, as we do take some donations in, but rather, new clothes are best sometimes for students in maintaining their dignity. We have a food program that we started in 2018. We give about 30 weekly bags away to high school and middle school students, as we've learned that many kids don't have much to eat unless they're here with us. Last school year, we had a donation of a washer and dryer to our school, so now we have free laundry facilities for our students there as well. And just last week, we formed a partnership with Crawford County Career and Technical Center with the cosmetology department, and we're going to start providing free haircuts. It's kind of a win-win for us. So donations like this make things that we do wonderful things that we are able to do for our students possible. So I'm greatly deeply moved by this donation. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much.
I think the rest of the class should identify themselves. There are Mr. Chris Thomas, Mr. John Bainbridge, and Ms. Brenda McMasters, part of the families here.
Sandra Duchesne.
I promised Frank I'd step in if he needed me to, and I think he needs me to.
I think so, too.
So Frank wanted to make sure that you all understand how much he personally appreciates what you've done. It really means a lot to him. I think that it really meant a lot to Ruth. And we all know what the caring closet does for a lot of students at the high school, and the Shreicks have been really helpful in that regard, and we're so appreciative of what you've done. So thanks a lot, on behalf of Frank and all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, we will move on to the student representatives, and we have Meadville Area Senior High School. I don't see Pat Stevens, but I see Ryan Young.
Good afternoon, everyone. Meadville's been kind of busy this last month. We've had a lot going on. So first, I'll start with sports. The Bulldog Basketball Team has had a great start to their season. Both boys and girls have a winning record this year. Indoor Track Team is gearing up for their championship next month. The Swim Team is also doing well, as the boys are 5-2 and the girls are 1-6. Wrestling placed third in their home two-study tournament. There were three champs, Tommy Pollard, Vince Rannella, and Trent Tidball. The team is second in their district behind Prep, and they have a record of 7-3. We would like to congratulate Trent Tidball on his 100th career win. We would like to wish all teams best of luck as they continue their winter season. For the band, marching band Mashapella and Mash Drama traveled to Walt Disney World this past week. They performed at the Magic Kingdom, Disney Springs, and marched in the Disney Parade. Macy from Mashapella said, "It was truly a magical experience. I was, am greatly thankful I was able to go." Mash also participated in its first-ever mash design review, where two teams pitched innovative proposals. It was a challenge for them to create and solve real-world problems with technology. The team called Medical Styles took first in their design of a wearable sleeve-like device that monitors body temperature to help with patients with MS monitor pain. Long-term custodian Dave Wheeler also won the Golden Apple Award, and we would like to congratulate him for his service over the years at Meadville Senior High School. During Christmas time, Link Crew donated, no, not donated, decorated the halls with Christmas lights to help lift school spirit. NHS also won Battle of the Bells, which was ringing bells outside of Walmart to collect money for the Salvation Army. The Dog House in the school also hosted its first-ever wintiformal dance called Fire and Ice. Students enjoyed their time with refreshments, DJ, and photo booth. Also, the king and queen of the dance were chosen by teachers. It was school-based, on their grades and involvement in the school. The Dog House students will now travel this week to elementary schools to recruit students for the coming year. Finally, Student Council is holding their Spirit Week this week, with a different-themed day each and every day. An assembly at the end of the week will conclude Spirit Week and recognize all winter sports. I would like to thank you all tonight for your time.
Thanks, Ryan. Next is Cochranton Junior Senior High School, and Kaylin Rose.
Good evening. So it's a new year, and we're busy as always at Cochranton High School. Under new head coach David Zamparini, our girls' basketball team has a current record of 10-7 overall and 7-5 in the region. Our boys' basketball team currently has a record of 3-11, and they just beat Maplewood on Friday night. For wrestling, our boys have a team record of 3-5 overall and 2-4 in the region, and sophomore standout Jack Martinek, who wrestles at 120 pounds, has a personal record of 25-5. Their senior night is tomorrow against Gerard. Our STEM Academy is running an after-school science camp right now for interested elementary school students. They are doing an egg-drop physics experiment, learning how to coat a spiral ball, dissecting a frog, and learning about a chemical reaction that can turn gummy worms into rocket fuel. Seniors in STEM Academy are also still doing their job shadows. We have seven students from Cochranton who are going to the Regional Academic Sports League meet at Edinburgh University on February 8th and 9th. Jessie McCullough, Sam Alt, and Lydia Wagner are all competing in honors. Joey Lipscomb, Ryanna Maloney, and Seth Arbuckle are competing in scholastic, and Mackenzie Walters is competing as varsity. Some of our upcoming school events are the American Heart Association fundraiser, and Student Council is doing a fundraiser for them, and our goal is to raise $450. We also, we plan to do so by selling paper hearts at senior night basketball games, and students are allowed to pay to wear sweatpants on Fridays, and whichever homeroom raises the most money will get a prize. And next week is our red and white Spirit Week, and some of our Spirit Days include Class Color Day, TikTok/Meme Day, Teacher and Student Switch, which is where the students get to dress up as their favorite teacher, and Teachers Get a Dress Down Day, and they get to make fun of the students' styles. And as always, our Red and White Day on Friday. And our red and white basketball game is on Friday, February 7th, against Union City, and our dance is the next Saturday. Thank you for your time and your support of our activities.
Thanks, Kaylin. And Meadville Area Middle School, Peyton Costello and Cameron Guffey.
Good evening. I'm Kami Guffey.
I'm Peyton Costello.
I hope you've all had a great holiday season and a good new year. We'd like to say thank you to the new donation to the caring closet. It really means a lot. Mam's has recently gathered a group of kids to participate in a challenge for National Geographic. Our objective was to find a solution for plastics in our waterways. We also had to create a video to present our ideas. This project just finished, what, I think last week?
Our beloved committee fair is coming up in February. Our marching band has also just got back from Disney because a few students from the middle school went.
Our winter sports are going very well. We have wrestling and boys' basketball close to finishing up their seasons. There's a group of kids working on a project called What's So Cool About Manufacturing? Our task is to create a video about what is appealing to kids about manufacturing. Our final product is due to be submitted in the upcoming month.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, girls. We will now move on to approval of minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes: the regular board meeting of November 25th, 2019; reorganization meeting of December 3rd, 2019; and committee of the whole meeting of January 21st, 2020. And I need a motion.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Thank you, Delwood. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we'll start the committee reports with curriculum. Melissa Burnett.
Approval of the One Federal Credit Union Student Branch Agreement for Second District Elementary School. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the One Federal Credit Union Student Branch Agreement for Second District Elementary School.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Paula Jo. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Paula Jo, extracurricular, please.
Approval of the formation of the Pulsar Search Collaborative Club and the Caring Closet Club. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Pulsar Search Collaborative Club and the Caring Closet Club at Meadville Area Senior High School at no cost to the district, and I so move.
And a second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Approval of overnight field trips and events. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following field trips and events: Meadville Area Senior High School Jazz Band to attend district band in Bradford, Pennsylvania on February 6th to 8th, 2020, at a cost to the district of $1,998.40. Meadville Area Senior High School Choir to attend region chorus in Fort Worth, Pennsylvania on February 27th to 29th, 2020, at a cost to the district of $2,013.40. Meadville Area Senior High School Band to attend region band in Indiana, Pennsylvania on March 25th to 27th, 2020, at a cost to the district of $1,972.60. Meadville Area Senior High School Innovation Class to drive to New York City on April 23rd to 26th, 2020, at a cost to the district not to exceed $1,000, and I so move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Well, it was Kevin, and, but Kevin, I think got it in first. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jeff Rose, finance, please.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities: the treasurer's report for November and December of 2019, financial statements for November and December of 19, bills for December 19 and January 2020, and there's many attachments there for you to see, and I so move.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Delwood. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
This is for the payment of bills separately. Here's the payment of majority LP, and I so move.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
I need abstention due to conflict of interest.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with eight and one abstention.
These next two motions have to do with LERTA tax abatement law or statute, I guess. I was going to ask if maybe, rather than me reading all this, if it would be better if you...
Sure, I'll, yeah, I don't think it's necessary for me to read all this, so I'll just give a brief summation of what this is. So the borough of Cochranton has approved LERTA tax exemptions for deteriorated property within the entirety of the borough's deteriorated area. So the school district is now taking up this resolution to approve those ordinances and to allow tax exemptions for certain entities that are, you know, making these, returning these properties to the tax rolls. So the, under the ordinance, the entirety of the borough is designated as a deteriorated area, and the school district has to approve that deteriorated area in the, within, within the same area as the borough did. So we can't make it smaller or bigger. It has to be exactly the same. And this came to the school board's attention because Adams Place is being developed and returning to the rolls of taxation fairly soon. So we need to adopt both the ordinance and then approve their LERTA request if the board wills it, lets us do so. So that's the short and sweet version of the ordinance or the resolutions we have here.
Following along on your agenda there, I'm going to assume that those are all the whereas', and I'm going to now therefore be it resolved by the Board of School Directors of the Crawford Central School District as follows: the school district hereby approves and adopts ordinance number 2-1989 and ordinance number 8-1992 of the borough as attached hereto as Exhibit A and Exhibit B. And the school district hereby approves the deteriorated area in which the LERTA applies to be the entire corporate limits of the borough, and three, that this resolution shall take effect immediately, and I so move.
But we're just, the first motion is on just the first. Okay. All right. And then I need a second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have a couple of comments. I think this is sort of a signature vote. And every time I come into town, I drive past Vantage over there. And also, this weekend, drove up past Pine Street, the old Talon property. And I believe by any other name, it was alerted that we granted to these two. And look what's coming there. I think it signals to anyone who might have any idea of coming into the district that we will work with them, for them, and the county has already voted for this LERTA, as well as the borough. The only vote I can give on this is yes, and anybody else that comes in in Meadville, Cochranton, or any place in between, you will get my yes vote.
Other comments?
Yes.
I'm in favor of LERTAs, but I think there's a certain way that you do them. LERTA is an ordinance which is meant to give an incentive to a municipality, to, for business to go to a municipality and to develop blighted property. And so part of the, part of the process of passing LERTA is for the municipality to go through public hearings and to determine what areas are blighted or deteriorated as, according to law. And there's really a fair amount of law on this. This was passed by Cochranton in 1989. They do have a reference to a public hearing. It looks to me like they intended to have a public hearing, and I don't know, maybe they had a public hearing or maybe they didn't, but I simply do not believe that the entire Cochranton borough is deteriorated and blighted. I think that if we're going to pass a LERTA, that's great. I'm all in favor of LERTAs. And Frank, you're right, we did pass something very similar to a LERTA that I recall, and that was Vantage. I wasn't a part of the other one, I don't think. But that was for a very specific area. It actually drew a boundary around the area and said, "This is property which, which is going to benefit from development." And yes, it put it under the tax rolls, and we benefit in the long run. But I don't think that means that you say the entire school district, the entire city of Meadville, the entire city, borough of Cochranton. I think what you do is you figure out what are the areas that require this kind of remediation, and then you invite it. And I don't, so I think we're taking this a little backwards. I also am very concerned about the fact that we haven't had public hearings on this. Now, I know that that's a requirement of municipalities, and I'm not sure that it's a requirement of the taxing authority, but we are joining in on their ordinance. And I don't, you know, we're joining in on something that was determined in 1989, and I don't have any idea what occurred with regard to input, whether this was a blighted or deteriorated area.
I understand you're not required as the local taxing authority to hold a public hearing. It's only the municipal governing body that is, that is required under 4725 of the LERTA Act. So while you certainly could have a public hearing if that's the, you know, the objective of the board, it's not required in the LERTA. So just...
Right. And so my concern is this. I want everyone to be clear on this. Somebody fills out a form and says, "We are a commercial industrial project, and we are improving property within the designated deteriorated area." And so they submit the form, and that's pretty much the requirements. That means anybody who's doing a commercial development within the area gets the tax abatement, and it's not necessarily meeting the requirements that are, that are part of the LERTA process. I mean, that's great. Everybody wants to pay taxes or pay less taxes, and I know that we all want to attract business, but we also have to remember that we're not, we're not adjusting our budget. We're not adjusting our budget. Our budget isn't going down, so we're still spending as much money, but we are bringing in a little less tax because of this abatement. So really, it's that the tax falls on other people's shoulders, and I don't know that that's a fair way to do it. If you're going to do it, great, but I say, let's make sure that it is associated with deteriorated and blighted properties. I'd like us to step back on this and go a little slower. I know that we want to do this for McAdams, or, excuse me, Adams. I know that we want to do this for Adams Place, and I'm a little afraid that because of that, we're rushing this through. Those are my comments.
Anybody else?
I do. Number one, as far as us bringing in less tax, I don't, I don't believe we're bringing in much on the property right now, so it's, it's not as if that money is already in the budget. Aye? I mean, it's, it is a deteriorated property that we're not, I mean, and you probably haven't looked it up, but...
Yeah, I could answer that question without...
There's no buildings on it. So, I mean, it can't be bringing in any, hardly any tax money right now. It will, in the future, and a lot more after it's improved. Secondly, as far as the whole area of Cochranton being designated as a blighted area, it was explained at our last meeting that basically it's too small to be divided.
Yeah, essentially...
As a borough, I mean, parts of Erie have been designated, but probably parts that are bigger than the borough of Cochranton.
I mean, I think that you could, historically, they could have designated any area, but, you know, it is a small enough borough that there's probably, you know, there's probably some justification for designating the whole borough in the past. Again, I can't speak, historically, I haven't moved through the minutes in 1989, but it is a small enough area that it is feasible to designate the whole area as deteriorated, given the size of the borough overall, as opposed to, you know, a large third-class city like the city of Erie.
And just filling out the application doesn't mean you get the LERTA. The commissioners have to approve.
Yeah, it is.
And they have skin in the game as far as taxes go as well.
They're sent to the assessment office for essentially a determination on the property and an assessment that is then conducted after the building is constructed or the facilities are constructed.
So, and I'm sorry, I want to jump in right there. So what you're saying is that the review is by the assessment office?
Yes. Under, under 4727 of the LERTA Act, we essentially act, we receive the request, so does the borough, and then it goes to the county for a determination and assessment at that time. If we want to challenge the assessment after the fact, we then have to file a legal action, essentially challenging the assessment and the potential exemption.
Am I correct to say that the assessment office basically wants to make sure that they've got the current value of the property so that they can compare it to the future value of the property when they're doing the tax abatement calculations?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the commissioners take that information and decide whether to grant it or not?
Yes. I mean, the commissioners have to approve it essentially the same way we do, but they act as the final, they act as the final body, basically, you know, granting the exemption, approving the assessment after the fact, so... Not sure about that. It says in number 4727, appeals from the reassessment, the amounts eligible for the exemption may be taken by the taxpayer or the local taxing authorities as provided by law. So the local taxing authorities essentially, we send it on to the county, and if the county renders some of it exempt and some of it not, we can appeal that, but they do have to take action on it eventually at the commissioner's level.
Well, giving Mr. Prather is due, but I believe we'll have another one here in Meadville very shortly. And sometimes you just plain have to put a little faith in the people that are planning these things and the people that are moving in. And if no risk, no gain, and Meadville's hardly, or Cochranton or Crawford County, a booming place anymore, and to me, what signal am I sending with a no vote? That's why my votes, it's pretty simple from my point of view. Mr. Prather's got a lot more on the side here, which is all legal and as it should be, but...
Well, I'd like to, I want to be clear, I would have the exact same concerns if we were going to pass a LERTA that covered the entire city of Meadville. I don't believe, I believe that there are parts of Meadville that are appropriate for LERTA tax abatements. And I actually think that the property that Adams Place is going on to is, is probably appropriate for tax abatement. I just am extremely reticent to, to join into a LERTA that declares the entire borough of Cochranton as a blighted area. I am extremely reticent to do that. In fact, I'm not going to do it.
Anybody else? I'm just going to piggyback on, I have nothing more to say because I think Ross has adequately said it all, but I agree with Ross. If it was just one, and we could take them one at a time and review each one independently, I would not feel as concerned. Anybody else? Okay?
I agree with you, Jen. I feel the same way. I agree that Adams Place is a, is a wonderful project. We need senior living. The whole community, the whole girl, I just think that we're getting ourselves, digging ourselves in. I don't think I could vote yes for, for that reason, now that, now that I fully understand.
Okay, well, I do believe we have a first and a second. If there are no other comments, then we'll take it to vote. All in favor?
We should probably do a roll call.
Want to do a roll call? All right. Lisa?
Mrs. Blitha?
No.
Ms. Burnett?
No.
Ms. Lynch?
No.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
No.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Shrek?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
So motion carries five to four. So motion carries five to four.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the forwarding of the Adams Place LURDA request to the Tax Assessment Office of Crawford County as required under the Local Economic Revitalization Act, Tax Assistance Act 72, PS 4727, and I so move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Kevin? Questions or comments? Maybe we better take another roll call. Lisa?
Mrs. Pilitha?
No.
Ms. Burnett?
No.
Ms. Lynch?
No.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Shrek?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries six to three, was it?
Yes.
Okay.
Resolved that pursuant to Act 32 of 2008, the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby appoints Guy W. O'Neill, Business Manager, as the Tax Collection Committee Primary Voting Delegate for the Crawford Central School District and further resolved that the Board of School Directors reappoints Phyllis Lord, Assistant Business Director, as the Tax Collection Committee Alternate Voting Delegate for the Crawford Central School District and further resolved that the primary voting delegate cannot attend a tax collection meeting, tax collection committee meeting, then the alternate voting delegate shall attend a tax collection committee meeting. The reappointment of Mr. O'Neill and Mrs. Lord as delegates are effective immediately and shall continue until their successors are appointed. Delegates shall be appointed or reappointed by the board each year. All delegates shall serve at the pleasure of the board and I so move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Delwood? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Resolved that the Board of School Directors of the Crawford Central School District hereby approves Schedule L Budgetary Transfers and I so move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel and policy, first, there's just acknowledgement of the professional employee status. Under terms of Section 1108 of the school code, the superintendent has notified the secretary of the board that Richard K. Grubbs has received a satisfactory rating for his sixth semester of employment and has thereby gained the status of professional employee and will be tendered a professional employee contract beginning with the second semester of the 2019-2020 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the stipulation involving student A. And I need a motion.
Submove.
Jeff? Second?
Second.
Paula?
Paula.
Okay. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries eight to one. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules: Schedule A, C, D, E, G, H, I, and M. And I need a motion.
Submove.
Melissa, who seconded it? Kevin? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that January is designated as School Director Recognition Month and at this time of the year, we celebrate and recognize our school directors for all of the vital work that they do for, on behalf of our students, our schools, and our families. So tonight, you found, you should have found a certificate that says, "Thank you for your services" and I just want to say to you all, thank you. Frank, I just want to say thank you for all the work you've done for the caring closet. I just wanted to say thank you. You have been a person that has done diligent work for the caring closet for the years that I've been here, so I want to say thank you.
You did very well.
That's all I have, Madam President.
All right. Any public comment? Any board comments?
I'll work at this. Ross may help me out again. The entire family supports the caring closet. The Shreks and Mutas have all gone together. So, match it. Both Cochranton and Meadville and the Crawford Central Community Foundation. So I thank you and Mr. Prather, thank you for the, you did pretty good without any warning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. And be it resolved that there's being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 6:05 PM and I need a motion. Okay, Melissa, second?
Kevin.
Kevin?
Kevin.
Aye. All in favor?
I had to go to the new voices.
Aye, opposed? Meeting is adjourned.